Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 14th, 2019 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Marvin Whitworth will leave us in our prayer and our pledge. Marvin.
Let us bow together. Our holy Father, we are indeed grateful for the blessings of the day, for all the beautiful weather that you've given us and you've allowed us to come to this point in time. Father, be with us as we meet tonight to discuss the matters of business concerning our county. We pray that you will give us wisdom as we undertake these matters and adjudicate them as it would be best in your sight. Father, be with us all. We pray for our first responders, for our military that protect us, and we pray that you will be with us and help us to do your will in all that we do, in Christ's name. Amen. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call and roll, please, Gail.
Chip Penyon. Charlotte P. Greg Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen. Jeff Phillips.
Present. Thank you, Gail. We have no minutes to approve tonight. We also have no items that have been withdrawn or deferred, so we'll get right to business. Item 6A under new business, 6A1, these are all rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6A1, item number 18-A005, Scott Gravy for Benchmark Companies. Location is Miller Road. Commission district is six. The county commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 20 acres, and approximately six of those are to be rezoned. Tax map is 156. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is PUD, a planned unit development. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well today. Just as by way of history, you've seen this request before. This request comes to the Planning Commission tonight as a result of a zoning enforcement action. The applicant owns the existing business located directly to the west of the subject properties. Benchmark Companies rezoned that property back in 2013 with a second rezoning request approved in 2014 to correct some of the zoning lines to match the property lines that were created. A site plan for the company was approved back in 2013. The applicant began using the subject property tonight for mulch storage at some point after moving his business to the adjacent property. Staff alerted the applicant he was in violation, instructed him to submit a rezoning application. The original request was for the EAC zone, similar to what the property adjacent on both sides is zoned. That was considered by the Planning Commission back in March of last year. The item was deferred for the applicant to pursue a planned development application. It has taken some time, but further enforcement measures prompted the applicant to prepare and submit the request that you have seen before you today. A copy of the applicant's pattern book has been included with your agenda materials. It's a separate attachment, but it is in the folder that is on your iPads tonight. The pattern book does show the property in question, as well as the proposed use, storage for the mulch, and also proposed buffering. Staff did have several comments on the pattern book that we did forward to the applicant's design consultant. We did get those comments back and a revised pattern book late Friday afternoon, early Friday evening. I did send a couple of emails to you alerting you to that, so what you have on your iPads tonight is the revised edition. The existing business does have access to Miller Road to the north of the intersection with Sledge Road. The subject property tonight that's being considered would only be accessed from the existing business. They're not proposing any other access points along Miller Road, which is good because we didn't really want to see any others. No additional parking is going to be required, as this is only to be used for mulch storage. Also, the pattern book was updated a little bit to add production, you know, is actually making the mulch and whatnot. Should this application be approved, of course, an engineered site plan would be required to be submitted to demonstrate that it meets county standards. The applicant is proposing buffers along the east and north property lines. Existing vegetation can be used for that. We would like, they did provide a little bit of additional information on that buffer, but again, if this were to be approved, they would have to submit a detailed landscape plan showing that, and performance standards would also have to be met. Under our staff recommendation, you'll see, you know, this applicant, I'm sorry, the application did zone, excuse me, the applicant did zone property to his existing business back in 2013. Since that time, his performance has not been what we led to believe would be the case. There are deficiencies on the site plan that we're still working with the applicant on. All that being said, we do believe that this property is probably not going to develop in a single-family manner. The area is identified as a major employment center in our comprehensive plan, and staff does expect further development above and beyond what has already been approved out in this area. Our concern, of course, is always going to be performance, and that's with any application that we see, and we are hopeful that this PUD approach would provide assurances as to the quality of the development that would be placed. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present. I don't think that was him.
Doug, is the current one that we approved in 2013, has it been brought up to specifications as far as with buffering and all that, or is it still lacking some things that we approved?
There are still some buffering issues. Now, if this property were to be zoned commercially, that probably wouldn't be as big of an issue. I would like to see more screening along the north side, though, because that property to the north is still zoned residential, even if it's vacant.
Buffering the only, sorry, is the buffering the only issue from 2013, or is there?
That's the primary one. Now, of course, you know, there's a lot of mulch storage and different things, you know, on that other property. That's the biggest. Now, the existing site, one of the biggest issues is the buffering. Are there stormwater issues on that existing site?
They have a stormwater pond in place, but it probably needs some attention. I don't think it's been maintained like it should have. And I'll try to pull up the original construction plans. I think Douglas is talking about the buffering along the sides and, well, the north, I guess, now, and farther to the east there. This is the original design. And then this is the original, or the current site where they've spilled over the edges.
Mike, do we need additional?
Dave, can you talk into the mic?
We need additional detention ponds on this, sir?
Well, not so much since it's all impervious area. We probably need to have them evaluate it. There will be some areas that will be compacted with heavy truck traffic through here, but the big mulch piles will absorb a lot of the stormwater. There was, I don't know if my, GIS maps give me some issues, so I'm trying to reboot it right now, but there was a pond on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Wetlands mapper that showed up in this area that probably needs to be mitigated, but has long since gone with this mulch pile sitting on top of it. They've had some issues with tracking mulch into the road on Miller Road, in and out. Their septic system is approximately in this area. They were storing some stuff on top of it, and they've since moved the stuff off of the septic system, but you can see from this arrow image from earlier this year in February when we had a lot of rains, we've got water standing all over the site.
I would like for this business to succeed, but they need to follow some rules, and it's been a problem in the past with the expansion of the mulch area and the track in and out and the detention pond since we started.
Have there been penalties for the violations and?
We've had numerous conversations with him, and actually, we're about to take him to court before this revised application was made. So as far as any court fines or anything like that, I think the answer is no, because we were just to that point where we were going to take him into court.
I have a couple of questions, Doug. Can you refresh my memory on the March 2018 meeting and the conversation there and why we were headed towards a deferral and a PUD versus considering this for the EAC, since both of the parcels on either side are EAC?
As I recall, the concern really was a little more surety as to what was going to be going on, on this new part of the site. I mean, what was already there was there under the EAC, which was, you know, conforming, but I think there was a little bit of discomfort as far as the commission was concerned to have him expand it under the same zoning classification. I think there was, the commission wanted a little more control as to what was actually going to be on the site at that point, as I recall.
That's really kind of how I was remembering it. So I guess my question then is, what's going to enforce compliance with the PUD that didn't enforce compliance with the EAC?
Well, with the PUD, of course, we have the pattern book where he specifies in there exactly what it is that he's supposed to be doing. Now, that being said, I mean, we do have the site plan as well, and we're, you know, trying to work with the applicant as far as bringing the site up, his existing site, up to the standard that it needed to be at. So, I mean, that all being said, I mean, it's, I think it was just providing another layer on top of just the site plan. We'd have the zoning on top of that as well, the PUD zoning.
And then the last thing that I thought of is this, and I don't know that we've ever experienced this before, if we did, it didn't register with me. Have we ever done a PUD on a leased parcel of land, not an owned parcel of land? Because I guess my question is, how do you reverse that? How do you reverse a PUD on a leased parcel of land?
I don't think it's really any different than if it's an owned parcel of land. I mean, the property owner has to give the applicant permission to make the application, so if the lease expires and the business leaves the site, they still have a PUD zoning for what's on the site. And if somebody wants to come in and operate under that same parameter, they can do that. If not, it would just be the same thing if somebody bought the property, if somebody sold the PUD and somebody else bought it and they wanted to change it, they'd just go through the amendment process.
So if his business for any reason is not successful, and you've got one part of his business with the EAC and the other part with the PUD, explain that to me, how that plays out if he is no longer occupying that space?
Well, if he's no longer occupying that space, then whoever worked to purchase the property would have to use it in the manner in which it was approved, should this be approved. If they wanted to use it differently, they would just go through the rezoning process again. Now, if they wanted to use the EAC portion a little differently, they could do that. They just wouldn't be able to spill over to this site saying, oh, it was all part of the same site, because then we would have to tell them, well, it's two different zones at that point.
Okay, so that's the distinction there.
Correct.
And then the same thing was, I made a note in your comments that the, that there could possibly, and I'm sorry, I'll pull it up, but these are just from my notes. There's a right-of-way, we could ask for the right-of-way dedication, and I'm curious, can you do that on a leased parcel as well? Because again, it's not.
Right, we would have to work with the property owner in that regard. Now, a portion of that, I see, I understand where you're going with it. This is, I mean, of course, this is all related to the improvements that are being made in the area for the elementary school. You know, as part of any development, I mean, typically, we do require some sort of right-of-way dedication if it's called for on the county's thoroughfare plan or if there's other issues going on. So they, we have asked the applicant to, you know, work with us as far as some right-of-way, possible right-of-way dedication as part of this. Now, of course, yes, the applicant would have to get the permission of the property owner for that, but, I mean, we would expect cooperation, you know, from the applicant as part of this.
But he can't give right-of-way on behalf of the landowner?
No, the owner would have to, correct. The owner still would have to do that.
Okay, so really, so for him, he disagrees not to put anything in that right-of-way space that would impede our ability?
Right, and of course, if we see a site plan, we're going to make sure that there isn't anything that's going to impede that, but that's, I know, you know, the highway superintendent, Greg Brooks, he's been working very diligently in that area, trying to secure all the rights-of-way that he needs for these improvements.
Doug, do you have a lot of complaints, mulch on the road? Do you have a lot of people call in?
I personally haven't talked to many, and we didn't really receive many phone calls on this application. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with?
It's been a while, but we, we have gotten several mud mulchs tracking into Miller Road, people having to drive through it and getting on their vehicles. And I'm looking at the arrow images, I might have to send my stormwater engineer out to look. Looks like they've got a pretty significant oil leak here, and looks like they've leaked a bunch of oil here, which is kind of concerning. I thought that was a mulch pile originally, but it looks, appears to be an oil leak. But like I said, this is from March of this year, and they did have some vehicles parked back here, which is kind of concerning, too.
Mike, the more you talk.
Yes, sir. Well, I mean.
Are we really ready here to do something right here? I don't think you think we are.
Well, I mean, we'll give the applicant time to make his pitch, but looking at this image, I, just glancing at it earlier, I thought this brown was just a mulch pile, but it looks like oil, and it, and looked like some oil spill over here on this side, too.
You guys would like to hear from the applicant?
I have a couple of questions first. I guess the first one's just an observation for the pattern book, pages seven, eight, and nine, the directional arrows of north are pointing the wrong ways. Page six is correct, but the rest of them have north facing to the east.
Well, you're correct. When I was looking at this, like I said, we got this late Friday. I was literally about to pack up and go home when we got this email. Excuse me. One of our comments, he actually had this, he had the orientation of the site turned, and he didn't have north arrows on it. So our comment was, you know, try to reorient or at least put a north arrow on there, so it looks like he did both. He put a north arrow, but he put the north arrow in the wrong direction, but he did reorient the site, like I asked him. So, but you are correct. I know when I was looking at that this afternoon, going over this before the meeting, I noticed that that was the case as well. So you're correct in that.
My other two questions are, one is, it seems like I read in somewhere about the grounding of mulch, preparing of mulch. Have there been any complaints or issues about noise or anything regarding?
I haven't received any. I've never received any noise complaints.
Was there the court enforcement action? I guess that has not been heard by a judge yet, but that is due to obviously some issues that you guys have. Is this to resolve one of those issues that's to appear to go before court, or are those separate issues?
Right, this would, if he were to get this property zoned and into compliance with our code, this would resolve the big issue that we've been having with him on this site, because, I mean, he's using it, and it's residentially zoned. I mean, it was never zoned for this. I think it is important to note as well that when considering the application, as far as this application is concerned, I know it's difficult to do because it's kind of operating as a whole with the existing site, but this needs to be judged on its own merits, not necessarily the performance of what's gone on in the past. So just be aware of that. I mean, we're just letting you know that just for historical purposes, the issues that we've had, but as far as looking at this site in and of itself, that's what's before you tonight as far as the zoning is concerned. It's just the zoning of that particular portion that's outlined here in the pattern book. So just kind of keep that in mind as we're deliberating this.
So you feel like if this is approved, then it is possible to bring all of the issues, whether it be stormwater or if there is something else on that site that's not water, and the buffering and all of that can be brought into compliance?
It'll take work, but yes, I do believe it can be done.
Well, yeah, I want to do it with a minimum amount of work for our staff and our county employees. If this is just going to create more work for them, I don't think I want to go there.
Well, and like I said, it's a matter of, it's just a matter of the applicant doing what his application says he's going to do. If he does that, now, looking at the pattern book, again, I haven't had just a whole lot of time to look at this, on the last page of the pattern book, looking at the location of those mulch piles, I personally would like, I wouldn't, don't really want to see mulch piles that close to Miller Road. He's got one pretty much right there in the front. I wouldn't mind that being pushed back a little further than it is. I know there's traffic flow and everything you got to, you know, you got to take into account, but, I mean, we have other, there are other landscape businesses that do mulch in the county, and, I mean, it can be done in a more neat manner, I suppose, than what's being done out here on the site. But, I mean, those are things that can be built into the pattern book, I think.
The highlighted area is the area that's currently zoned. The highlighted area, red highlighted area, this highlighted area. Is there some function that's going on outside of that area? It looks like in that upper left-hand corner, there may be something that's outside of that area.
It looks like he might be, I mean, based on that photo, it looks like he might be going outside just a little bit, but again, that's, of course, this is a, this is a 2019 area.
This is the 2019.
Yeah, earlier this year. Now, I mean, I think that is something, he's supposed to have a buffer right through there, along that side, so, I mean, that's one of the things that, you know, we can work with him on. Of course, again, that not necessarily being the subject of tonight, but yes, there should be a buffer in that area.
Getting back to the question, is that in compliance?
That portion?
It appears that it's, there's some business going on outside of the.
Based on what we're looking at here, yeah, that looks like it needs some attention. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions you guys want to hear from the applicant? Why don't we go ahead and do that, and then we can ask questions for the applicant. Lee, did you have something before we did? Okay. Is the applicant present? Looks like you've got some splaining to do.
Chairman Phillips, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Hudson Steel Engineering, and I'll do my best to answer the questions that I can, and Mr. Gravy's here as well if there's any more specific questions to him as far as the business operation. As was mentioned, the first thing is, I talked to Mr. Gravy about the buffering requirements, and there's a little discrepancy that he's working through as far as on that northern property line about having a fence and also some landscaping. He's willing to do whatever it takes in terms of the fencing or the landscaping, work with the planning staff to see what's best on that northern portion. As far as on the, I'm a little bit disoriented over there because it's just the way the road turns, but as far as the existing vegetation, we plan on keeping that and not really encroach upon that. There's a little confusion in our first application because we asked for about four acres, and that's really the area that he's disturbing, and really, we're asking for six because that includes all that, all that natural buffering that's on two sides of the property. So I wanted to make sure that's clarified. As far as the right-of-way, we've done a little research on that, and I think where it's going to primarily impact his site, based on the history of how, what we've seen already in some of the drawings, is that Miller Road's going to take more of a sweep versus a T, and so that front portion of the property is probably going to be where that right-of-way requirement's going to be needed, so that's one thing we've got a little bit more information on. As far as along Miller Road, there's an existing tree stand. Right now, I think this picture's in the winter, so everything looks brown, but there's a pretty nice tree stand on what would be considered the southern portion of the property. That's going to remain, and there's a pretty good gap right where Mike's cursor is. It's right now, you can see right into the mulch area, so that's where we're proposing a berm plus vegetation to really close off any kind of visual. I mean, the mulch piles are high, so it's not like we're going to be able to knock them out totally, but we're definitely going to knock out, right now, it almost feels like you can drive in from Miller Road into this area, and that's not the intention at all. As far as the drainage, I know with, working with Mike and Doug, they said that that's something we really have to address, because even where we're proposing that berm, like Mike's saying, there's some water flow that wants to naturally migrate towards the southern portion of the site, and so that will have to be addressed in site plan as well. So as was mentioned in the meeting, a site plan will be really key for Mr. Gravy to kind of make these things in compliance. As far as this process has been concerned, as Doug mentioned, this is really an effort on our part to try to make sure that all the issues that were basically present on this particular piece of property, we address them. And even, and you're right about, Doug wanted me to make sure that we identified that he does store equipment on that back portion of the property. He also makes mulch on that portion of the property, so those are two functions that are in the pattern book to make sure those are covered within the planned development. As far as the neighbors are concerned, we had a neighborhood meeting. No one showed up for the meeting, and it does feel very rural out there right now, but we know when the new school goes out there, it's going to become a much more busy place, and so the buffering's going to be very important to make sure there's a nice, adequate buffering between Mr. Gravy's property and Miller Road. So with that in mind, Mr. Gravy's here if you have any specific questions for him, or if I can try to answer anything, I'd gladly do that.
Mr. Gravy would come up. Maybe we can ask questions of both of you.
I have one question for Clyde before he goes. Have you all discussed mitigating the wetland that was disturbed?
I haven't discussed with Mike nor with Mr. Gravy at this point.
My name is Scott Gravy. I'm the owner of Benchmark, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I will, if you don't mind, I will start out by the question on the oil. It's not oil. Our mulch piles, when we have significant amounts of rain, which you can tell by the photos, everything's wet, when it cycles through that large mulch pile, it just, it's basically just leaching through there, the material, the water gets dark. So that's all that was. That's why it looks like it's a darker shade, but, I mean, that's, that would be hundreds and hundreds of gallons of oil. I mean, that's.
Same with over here?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, this, that is a large pile of mulch, so anytime we run a wheel loader or anything through there, it's obviously going to create a little bit of a rutting through there. So then we go back with a dozer and make sure everything is cleaned up, but.
We'll check it out.
Sure.
Questions of the applicant at this time? All right, thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I do understand that the performance with the property has left some things to be desired. I wouldn't be here and know that I was going to get raked over the coals if I wasn't willing to make everything right. So when we were at the neighborhood meeting and nobody showed up except Clyde, myself, and Doug, we actually had that conversation about, look, I know the performance, I get caught up in the day-to-day of running the company and making sure that we adhere to the site plan by dotting i's, crossing t's, left some things to be desired. We'll make all that right. We're a good neighbor to our neighbors out there. We don't have issues with neighbors, and we'll make sure the site plan conforms to the site plan and the PUD, so.
Pettis, what, for you. Sit down. I'm glad you said that, because when I look at a PUD and what you've brought here or what we have, that basically is supposed to be showing me exactly what you plan to do, and when you say, this is what I plan to do, that's what this commission expects.
Okay.
And it doesn't mean that I'll deviate, I'll go differently from that. That's what your neighbors will expect. They mean, when you pick up that book right there, that's what you're going to do, and that's what we're looking at. As I look at this PUD, it's difficult for me to exactly see what you're going to do. I just don't see that much in this PUD.
There's not. All it is is mulch storage. There's not. All it is is mulch storage. So there's nothing, I mean, we're not, there's no power back there. We're not, there's no, I mean...
But, but when I look at these up here, I see a lot of other different things. It's all in, in different areas. So...
When you say "up here," where are you referring?
You know, I see equipment back here, so I guess that's grinders and things that you have there.
That's just parked there, yes, sir. That's a trailer. There's a wheel loader parked there. There's a, a truck that's parked there, but that is in the PUD, equipment storage or, because this, the pile of mulch on the backside of that, that property, it's obviously going to get, it's going to be ground into mulch. So we'll have a grinder back there. But our coloring operation takes place on the, on the front portion that's zoned EAC. There's no further extension back there. All we're going to do is store mulch. It's simply because we extended past our, the necessary footprint for the size of company we are.
And I, I know the operation you have there. I know it has a lot of environmental concerns and things of that, too. And I, I think I understand what you're talking about there. You're talking about the leach aid that's, or coming out of there. You're talking about walnut stain and different things coming from the, the mulch that's coming out of there.
It's just a variety of different hardwoods, yes, sir.
Sap and things that's coming through there. But, but as I said, when we see a, a PUD, we expect that's what we are going to see.
Yes, sir.
If we drive up there and look at that, we'll be able to look at it from that book. But I just want to, I like to make that point clear.
What is your realistic time, timeframe that you're going to rectify the problem on the northern part of the piece, of the other piece of property that, the berms of the, going, encroaching across the northern border? Would you, to get that cleared up, what, what's your, what's your timeframe?
Well, as far as the, the area that's shown there that's encroaching, I mean, that's, all it is is a, it's a playground mulch bin. We can just pull that back four or five feet or whatever that, that distance is. But I've got a, the land that, the landowner to the north of me is also the one that we're leasing from, I guess it would be the, the southeast side. So we've got a, a really good working relationship. There's never been the, okay, we need to make sure that we're right on the, on the line there. It's, it's kind of been the, the good old boys' club, just an agreement where he, he actually has some equipment out there and he uses our shop and, and that's, so I haven't, I haven't, that's one thing I haven't done, has been, okay, we, we need to stop right here, and this is where we're going to stop, and adhering to the site plan, which, as I said, we'll, we'll make right.
Thing else?
I want to expound on what he's saying, I guess to make sure that I understand in that when he speaks of that northern line, as part of this PUD, that's the new tract, you will be installing a buffer there or utilizing an existing buffer, which doesn't look like there is one.
On the new section, it would be the existing, but...
Existing buffer, but on that old section, okay?
On the old section, I had talked to...
So that has a different zoning than this area, if I'm understanding correct, but that also is required to have a landscaping buffer. Is that correct, Doug, from under the old zoning?
On the north side of the existing site you're talking about?
Oh, yes.
Yes, yes. There's, there's supposed to be a buffer. Now, you'll see this, this was the original, this was before the lines were corrected. So the zoning line's actually where the property line is. So there should have been a buffer as outlined. You can see that there was a buffer called for right there. So yes, there should have been.
I was thinking. So I just want to be sure you understand that what we're talking about and what you have, pulling that mulch back four feet is not what was required of you.
No, I was just talking about the front section where they said we were encroaching over the line.
Yeah, that's on, on the north side.
But as far as making sure that...
Yeah, you were supposed to have a landscaping berm.
That's correct. That's what we, we are going to make right.
Much more than just pulling the mulch back off of your neighbor's property.
I thought you, when you, actually, when you first started, I thought you had talked about just the fact that we encroached over the, the line. So we'll do both. That's a twofold approach.
And that buffer would prohibit you from encroaching over that line?
Sure. It's a twofold approach. We're, what I'm saying is that we'll make sure that everything on the site plan is i's dotted, t's crossed. When we get done, the planning commission will be happy with what, what we're doing out there.
Thank you. Sure.
Pat, if I could respond to your concern and maybe Doug's concern as well. In the book, because of how his business has a little bit of a, you know, I think sometimes the piles are larger, sometimes they're smaller, it's a little bit, the site kind of has a little dynamic to it. Doug wanted to make sure, we, we made sure that the tasks that were happening on the site, the truck storage, the, the actual grinding can happen on the site. As far as the specific location, are you asking for us to delineate in the pattern book very specific location for those things, or are allow, just to let you know those potential functions would happen onsite? Because that would be one of my questions, because I think I might be able to work with Scott to get more definitive exactly where those things will occur. But I think what Doug's concerned is, you know, moving the mulch piles back from Miller, there's absolutely no issue, and we may just want to designate in the book, like, a distance and say, you know, mulch piles will not be within 60 feet or 80 feet or whatever from Miller Road. And then for clarification, one of the things I think Doug was looking for, and it's not in lieu of that northern buffer, but I talked to Scott about this, is, is possibly getting a little bit of landscaping. If you go out there, you see his building, there's a lot of green space, and then there's parking, and then this, most of the storage is happening back on this back portion that, I think, and Doug, you can correct me on this, is maybe some landscaping that would soften. When you look from Miller and see his building, you don't see all that. I mean, you basically see all the way back to the back portion of the site. So, and the pattern book, I kind of show landscaping that's kind of separating that, the kind of the functional area from more of the public area. So that, I just need to know exactly how much delineation. We can make those adjustments before we go to, you know, county commission as far as the commissioners. But if you can give me a little insight as far as, because it is, like you said, it's kind of like an open site with mulch storage, but we're trying to bring some definition to it. And it may be a, you know, quantity of vehicles, it may be an area, it may be a distance, if you can give me a little direction.
Yeah, I think a little more detail, like you were saying, as far as the amount of equipment and vehicles being stored there. Now, as far as the mulch piles are concerned, if you want to do no closer than, like you said, 60, 80 feet, I mean, I would like a little separation. I'm okay, you don't have to show the exact location of the piles, I don't think.
So just, okay, just...
I think you could just, yeah, you could say that mulch piles will be stored at a minimum X amount of feet from the public right-of-way.
Okay.
And I would be okay with that. And it would, honestly, it would make more sense because then we're not looking at, oh, there are mulch piles six feet over from where it's supposed to be. I mean, that's not what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, as far as the other landscaping, I don't think we can necessarily mandate that as part of the PUD because it's on a different site. But, I mean, if you want to show that as just something that the applicant's going to do, you know, willingly on his part, I mean, it won't be something that we can bind you to on the PUD. But, I mean, I think that's a goodwill gesture.
Okay.
And the site plan that was up there a few minutes ago had jersey barriers delineating the piles and things of, of that nature that set what you're talking about, those boundaries and those marks and those actual footprints.
Mm-hmm.
So I was a little surprised to see that it's more of an eastward expansion, more so than an encroachment on the property we're talking about. I mean, I was surprised to see that basically it's just operating completely on that property that we're here to rezone tonight, which gives me a little heartburn because then you see evidence that on the north side and the non-compliance issues and all that put together, just, it looks like expansion in all directions. So it's got to be reined in somehow.
And that's where I think as far as, I think that's what Mr. Gravy's going to have to do, is we have to delineate those lines, reinforce those lines. But I think it's kind of one of those, because it's a 20-acre surround, it's just been, it just migrates, and like those piles, just kind of, they get bigger, they get smaller, and things, those lines aren't very definitive right now. And maybe a fence is something to really consider that really shows the line itself. But I think Mr. Gravy's got that message that we got to make sure those, those boundary lines are very well defined and, and basically maintained. And like I said, the one along the southern portion, along Miller, that, that one, from an aesthetic standpoint, that's the one that most of the public's going to see because right now you can see right, right in there from the road, and, and as it gets more populated, it'll, it'll show up more.
Doug, it's site plan right up there on the board. Did we approve that?
Yes.
We approved the site plan as that?
Correct.
It doesn't look anything like what's out there today.
It needs some attention onsite, yes.
I mean, it doesn't look anything like that today, so I guess, but we can't bind them to that site plan though, correct? In, under the EAC?
Well, no. If, if that's what they said they were going to do in the site plan, I mean, now, some of the things on there, like I said, we've been trying to work with them on. Now, as far as the parking and the building locations, I think those are where they said they're going to be. Of course, you know, the mulch never quite made it the way we thought it would. So, I mean, those are things I think that we can work with the applicant on, on the existing site.
I mean, that's what we approved.
Yes, the site plan.
Not we didn't need to approve, you know, I guess I'm going back to the fact that we approved the plan and it's not been adhered to, I guess is the, the point. I understand things change. I'm, I'm not, but that site plan that we approved, that we felt like we were going to see, is not what we're looking at today.
The way that's been today, correct?
And I'd have been fine with them coming back and saying, hey, we need to modify this a little bit. Can we go back through the process? And I, there's no issues, but, I mean...
We can, I mean, at this point, we're, the applicant seems to be willing to do the changes that need to be made.
Before you leave, I may, we may have one more question.
I just mentioned something about the original site plan. And they did this original site plan in 2012. When we did the final inspection, it did look like the site plan. It mimicked the approved site plan. This has happened over the last six years. Every time we went out there, it was ever-changing. It was ever-moving. Mulch, mulch piles were moving. Equipment was moving, storage was moving. So to answer your question, Mr. Pinion, the, the site plan, it did look like that when, when we did the final inspection. The mulch piles, the mulch piles and stuff were at the back of the north side of the lot. They've all been moved since, since the inspection was done, final inspection.
Thank you, Tanya. All right, ready for our public hearing? This time I'll declare a public hearing open for item 18-A-005, Scott Gravy for Benchmark Companies. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. You've got to be quick. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners? Doug, did we address, or could we address the carrying of the materials off-site onto the road? Is there a way to, for us to address that in, in this, in this rezoning request?
Well, I think that, I'll let Mike speak a little bit more to this, as far as maybe some measures that could be in place. I think we could work with the applicant as far as something at the entrance to the existing site, because there's not going to be an entrance to Miller Road from this site. But I think some verbiage could be added in there as far as, you know, recognizing that this is an issue and that steps need to be taken appropriate, as determined appropriate by staff to, to handle that issue.
Well, if it's approved, staff will at least approach that?
Yes.
If something can be done?
Yes.
Doug, I have a question, one more question on this. Since we're talking about two different parcels and two different zonings, is it important at all to have an access point defined for this PUD, as some kind of a easement or something?
I think what they could do, since they're, like you said, there really isn't a defined point per se, when we see the site plan come through, I think they could establish some sort of a cross-axis easement along the line, just in general. Maybe not along the entire length of it, but kind of like how Mike is kind of showing it there on the, on the screen. Just a certain portion of that line, do a cross-axis easement. I think that'd be okay.
The reason that I ask is, again, goes back to the point of, it's a leased parcel, and we're approving, we're, we are considering approving a PUD. So if, if this parcel and the parcel that he's currently on should somehow begin, become operating independently, then at that point, would we consider an access point off of Miller Road, since this has road friendage?
At that point, if this were to start, start operating independently, I think you would have to at that point. Unless you wanted to work out something with the, you know, the other property owner, that'd be up to them. But in absence of that, if this were a standalone business, then at that point, yes, I think you would want to see a separate access on to Miller.
I just, since we're considering standalone zoning, I was trying to make sure we had access covered.
Right.
So the existing parcel will, will remain EAC?
Correct.
Be the PUD?
That's correct.
What happens if it does not get approved? What happens with this parcel?
Then he needs to clean it up and get all the mulch off of it. Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're asking? If this, if this request today weren't to be approved, yeah, then all the use on that property, all the mulch storage and everything would have to be taken off.
Because if it was correct in 2012 and it has evolved into this, then there is some knowledge of knowing, or there's knowledge that expansion across or eastward into that next property, it was not zoned correctly for that.
Right.
So I, for my part, I do not have any confidence whatsoever that it'll be brought into compliance or even held into compliance at this point. So for me, I'm, I'm having, I'm struggling back and forth with this. I'd love to see it cleaned up, but I don't, the eastward expansion just bothers me.
Right. Well, and...
Do you mind if I chime in real quick on that? Because I think it's an important topic that you all have been discussing. So I, I don't think you can rely on past non-conformance or codes violations as a basis for denying this particular application. You're here to concentrate on the use and what's before you and not the conduct of the individual. That would be reserved for codes department. So I think it's important to be mindful that you can't really penalize an applicant or otherwise try to enforce zoning for non-conformance of other parcels when considering this parcel in application.
And I agree with that, but my, my issue is, it's not past, it's present. I mean, we're, that's what we're seeing now. So that's what I'm struggling with.
Right. And if this is denied, like I said, it's just be like any other application that we see, they just would have to, they would have to cease and desist. And we'd get, and of course, we'd give them time to clean up the site. I mean, it didn't get this way overnight, so it's not going to be cleaned up overnight. But, you know, we would work with them as far as, you know, removing the mulch piles and getting it back into the state it was in prior to that. But that's what would happen if this were not to be passed. They would have to clean it up.
So along those lines, Doug, if the PUD, because we've got the pattern book, gives us some, some greater reassurance of, of what is going to happen on that parcel, does this reset the clock for him? I mean, what's the timeline for compliance or non-compliance that would require some action?
I don't think it necessarily resets any clocks at this point because, I mean, he's already been put on notice that these things need to be taken care of. I mean, we've been more than lenient with getting him to come into compliance with this site, especially the, what we have before us today. So if this were to be approved, I don't think it just, the clock starts back at zero again and, oh, okay, we'll wait another six months till we see a site plan. I mean, this is something we're going to expect quick action on. And if we don't see it, I mean, we will be in contact with the applicant and their design engineer to get something moving and to get something to us for review.
Doug, you stated you only received this plan on Friday and have, have not had a good chance to look at it. Do you need more time? I mean, I believe in, we can't, you know, I'm not sure this may be the best use for this property. You know, the likelihood of a neighborhood going in this property is not true, or, you know, is not likely. But, you know, do you need, looking at the PUD, as Mr. Reed said, that it's hard to tell what exactly, there are a lot of circles and not a lot of information. You know, where's the equipment going to go? It looks like equipment is there, but it's not stated on the PUD. Do you need more time to look at it?
Well, I'll say this. The, there are several things that still need to be changed on this plan. Again, when only having the, a limited amount of time to look at it, as I did, there still needs to be some tweaks to it. Now, the tweaks that need to be made, like some of the things we talked about today, you know, where the mulch locations are, rather than showing exact locations to show a general area, I think those, most of those things, showing where the property storage are, most of those things I think can be addressed between now and when this would go to the county commission. I would be, if you wanted to move this forward, I think we could move it forward with the understanding that we will get a revised pattern book here a couple of weeks prior to when the county commission meets. And I would anticipate having conversations with the applicant and his design engineer to, to tweak that the way it needed to be tweaked. But if you, as a commission, feel we need more time to look at, that's always your prerogative to, to recommend at a furl to make those changes.
How about you, Mike? You looked at this area and you saw anything? But has not been indicated on this PUD at all.
Well, I mean, if we're looking at zoning, I guess we need to look at zoning, but, I mean, there's, we've struggled with this site for a long time, and we'll have a lot of work that needs to be done to, to clean this up and get it into conformance, but... of work that needs to be done to, to clean this up, get it into conformance. But, I mean, I, I'll try to get things right. I mean, I, I'd struggle and try and, you know, work hard. So, I mean, but I, this was one of the first site plans. It was already approved before I got here, and we had to look at this, at the closing stages, for the original site plan. And it was, it was a challenge, just to get, you know, scraping and crawling across the finish line where, where he was in 2015, I think. But, I don't know. I mean, I'll, I'll leave it to the attorneys and the planners with, with the zoning issues.
So, Mike, a more pointed question would be, do you have stormwater issues, drainage issues?
Yes.
With this specific site that we're considering now?
Yes. Well, they'll have to mitigate that pond. It was about a quarter of an acre. It's above the threshold that it'll have to be addressed at the state level and the federal level with US Fish and Wildlife. They'll have to evaluate the stormwater pond and, and the functionality of it. They'll have to create a, essentially, an industrial SWIP, a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So, I mean, if this is just like hair dye, not, not oil, that's one thing. But if it's, if it's an oil spill, hydraulic fluid or something, that's something else we need to address. The storage of vehicles and toxic materials, old tires, you know, that's, that's several things we'll need to look at on the site plan.
I have another question. If it is not approved, will those things be addressed?
If you're talking about the, what the site before us, what you're talking about, the property before us?
Mike stated, the pond covered up, the possible, you know, contamination, would those things be addressed if it's not approved?
Well, and I think this is back to what I was talking with, with Lee about. If it's denied, this all has to be removed and it has to be mitigated. Either way, it's going to have to be mitigated one way or the other.
You have some, something else?
I can say just a few things real quickly. As far as the book getting turned in on Friday, Mr. Gravy is out of town on vacation, and Doug was out of town as well on a, on a planning conference. And the two issues that were outstanding were really the right of way, trying to get clarification, and then the landscaping from Mr. Gravy. So, I wasn't able to get those answered. So, that's where the book does. I kept on waiting, waiting, waiting to see if I could get it done. And so, with this in mind, I think there's some details we can bring into this book that bring a lower, a higher comfort level. Again, I think this happened because it's a growing business. He's got 20 employees. It's a growing area. There's a lot of need for mulch. So, it's a business that's thriving. If it was in an urban situation where those, those property lines are defined, he probably would have worked within those parameters. But because there really weren't any defined lines, he just kept on going. So, I think there's some things we can do as far as even, you know, some commitments in the book that are not in that book right now, as far as limits on the amount of storage in terms of vehicles, maybe some locations. Again, even that mulch machine he uses on track, it moves around with the mulch piles, because it kind of has to orient each mulch pile. So, I'd like to ask for a deferral right now, if we could, to go ahead and bring more detail to the book, and then work with Mike on some of the stormwater. And we don't have really any mention of that in the book right now. Mike brought it up, that we don't want to impede, you know, any sort of natural movement of water as a result of the berming on Miller Road. But, at, at this time, you know, it's a, it's a growing business out in the county. It's, it's kind of out there, and he's just been doing his work. And now we just have to bring a lot more definition to what he's doing. And how best even to find that line, working with Mike and Doug as far as on that northern property line. If it's a fence, if it's, if it's buffering in a fence, I think we can bring that in, into the book, that level of detail. But because if you went out there, it's a mulch operation, it's just not that defined. And as was mentioned, that Tanya mentioned, it was the fact it's growing, those mulch piles, those mulch bins just got bigger, they moved and they morphed. And I think as long as his parameters, you know, he sets his parameters as far as where those boundaries are, I think we could really bring a lot more peace to you all, and maybe put some limitations on exactly how many things can happen on that site. Right now, it's, it's pretty, pretty loose.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'll go ahead and make that motion to defer this application. And there is a lot of things, I think, that do need to be cleaned up. But I will ask Codes, what are we going to do to enforce this other? What are, what are our next moves and next actions?
Before we get into discussion, let's have a second on the deferral chip.
Take a second. A second.
Okay. We have a first and a second now.
What, what's our actions now to make sure that this comes into compliance to what we want, since we're going to defer the others? So, we're taking that out of the equation tonight. What are we going to do to work on this other, to get it up to where it needs to be?
Are you talking about the existing site plan, or the existing site?
That's correct.
Well, I'll get with Doug and Mike and discuss whether they're going to make him make those, or put those mulch piles and stuff back where they were.
Yeah, we, we can work with, with Tanya and with the applicant on that. It may need to be a revised site plan, you know, showing how he wants to operate. I mean, if he wants to change the operation of the site, I mean, that in and of itself isn't a major issue, it's just a matter of showing it on the site plan, so we have something accurate. I understand that, you know, it's kind of more of a fluid situation, but I think we can work with that. But some of the other issues, as far as the buffering on the north side and those kind of things, those are things that would have to be addressed regardless.
The buffering's one thing, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to put on my, my Mike bought hat. But the stormwater's the bigger concern I've got right now. And Mike's not giving me any warm fuzzies about that. So, I'd like to know what our plan would be to mitigate that and get that back into compliance as well.
Yeah.
In that area, since it does flood very easily.
Have a motion and a second to defer. Is there any other discussion on that motion? All who's in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to defer carries. Thank you. Item 6A-219-A-020 for Keith Barrett. Location is 3316 West Jefferson Pike. Commission District is 2. County Commissioner is Steve Piercy. Size of the site is approximately 1 and 1/2 acres, uh, 5 acres, I'm sorry, and approximately 1 and 1/2 of those are to be rezoned. Tax map is 25. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. According to information provided by the applicant, which this is included with your agenda packets on your iPads, he would like to rezone a portion of the property, about an acre and a half, in order to operate his landscaping company. He would construct a 3,000-square-foot building for material and equipment storage. He states that five trucks and three trailers would be stored on the property outside the building. Hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, excuse me, 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Most of the traffic would be during the first and last, last half-hours of each day. Very little activity is contemplated during the workday, as the workers would be out in the field. It's anticipated that the applicant would subdivide the commercial portion of the property from the parent tract, should his application be approved. As you can see from the map that's on the screen, access to this property is along West Jefferson Pike. There's an existing gravel drive that will access the business back, towards the back of the property. The parking area is being shown on the concept plan as well. Of course, verification of county requirements for access, parking, parking surface material, et cetera, would be made during the site plan review process. Commercial services properties are required to install a Type 2 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. Any outdoor storage would also have to be appropriately screened. Again, a landscape plan would be submitted along with the site plan to show us that as well. And performance standards would have to be met. Although only a portion of the property is being requested for rezoning, we feel that this request would be consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, as this is located along an urban-style corridor, as identified in the plan. There is an existing commercial business at the corner of West Jefferson Pike and Mona Road, which is only about 1/3 of a mile to the northeast, right, northwest, excuse me. And staff would recommend approval of that. So, the applicant is present, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Fair community meeting?
Not for this. No, sir.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question, Doug. I can't recall ever seeing a, a commercial flag lot where the commercial is in the back. That feels odd to me. Does that feel odd to you? No?
No. I mean, it's just, most of the activity is going to be in the back of the property. So, I mean, it's just, we don't see portions of zones typically, but, or portions of lots being rezoned typically. More often than not, we see the whole thing. But they don't want to use the whole site as commercial. They just want to use the back portion of it. So, this was the easiest way to try to accommodate that.
So, what's the, what's the zoning all around it, then?
Residential, it's RM, residential medium density.
And then, the only other thing I had, on the, on our packet, it's on page 17, I guess it's to the comments that the applicant has written up. At the bottom, he says that parking of employee cars and overnight storage will be on the grass adjacent to the west side. And so, that's, that's not correct, then?
Oh, I'm looking at it.
I'm sorry, it's page, the bottom of page 16 of 27?
Well, the proposed, right, the proposed building would be, I mean, he would have to kind of shift where he's have some, the proposed building would be up, if you look on a concept plan that he submitted with his application.
I'm reading his statements.
Right, right. I, I realize. I'm, I'm just saying, yeah, and I'm seeing that parking of employee cars and overnight storage would be on the grass adjacent to the west side. Well, that's, again, that would go back to the, I see what you're saying. That would go back to the fact that he's going to have to submit a site plan for us to, to look at as far as materials and everything, and how that's going to work. Generally, with parking and vehicular maneuvering areas, they have to be paved. If it's just strictly for storage and things, we can work with that, for maybe some gravel. But, but, yeah, it wouldn't just be grass. He would have to, that may be what he intends, but he'll have to do a little bit more than that.
It looks like there's an existing building.
I believe it's a barn of some sort, yes. That's not what he would use. He would build a new building for that. The business would be a, a new building he would construct, not that existing one at 3316, if you look on his, one of his concept plan maps.
So, would the rezoning of this property prohibit him, then, from using that barn and that parking area for part of his business?
Correct. Yes, it would have to be on the property. It was actually zoned commercial.
So, the driveway and most of his existing parking would?
It would have to kind of change how they're going to do that, right.
Change that, so that that's, that's not usable anymore for commercial.
Doug, is there any lower zoning than the CS that would permit the use that he's got?
For construction, sales, and service uses, no. It would have to be commercial services. Commercial neighborhood wouldn't allow it.
All right, one last question, Doug. Did they consult with you about where the zoning line needed to be, so that they could continue to use that barn, or no?
We had conversations with the applicant regarding the use of his business on this property, and this is what they submitted. And he didn't indicate using the existing barn for anything.
I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, but it looks like from that picture that all the activity is going on around that barn that's not used for anything. The, the business, the business exists right now and is, and is on this piece of property, correct?
I don't necessarily, I don't know how much of the business, the applicant's here, I'm not sure if, I know he wants to build the new building. I mean, it looks like there's some activity going on there, but I think he wants to make this kind of a permanent location.
Okay, so, one more question, Doug. And this, I guess we come into the site plan time. Assuming this zoning goes through, is he going to have to put a buffer between his own residential property and his own commercial property?
If, well, especially if it become, he wants to subdivide this off, as we understand it. So, he would have to at that point. Now, I think there's, there's a lot of existing material there. And of course, I don't necessarily know if you'd have to, it'd be difficult to do any buffering along the flag portion. That just wouldn't be practical. But along the other sides would make more sense. Yes.
You guys ready to hear from the applicant? Is the applicant available? Please come forward. How you doing? State your name and address, please.
Home address or this address? Keith Barrett, 2125 Stratford Road.
Get that. Do you give us a, a brief synopsis of what you plan on doing with this piece of property?
This all came about when I applied for a building permit and was told that I needed to talk to planning. And so, I talked to planning and was told that I need to rezone it for commercial. So, I've been operating the business without knowing all this for 19 years. It is my parents' property, and that existing building and the little shed, both are their property, their buildings that are on their property. The mulch bins, we built about two or three years ago. That is within what I'm asking to have zoned commercial. And the proposed building, you'll see on your, somewhere in your documents, would be on the back northeast corner of the proposed commercial zone. You asked about, well, one of you said it looks like there's a lot of activity around that. Well, yes, the gravel is where we park our trucks at night and where the employees park their cars during the daytime. The only thing that we use inside that building is a concrete floor where we jack the mowers up to change the blades, and a small, maybe 10 by 10 room where we have hand tools, like shovels and rigs. And of course, all that will be moved to the new building, if we can build that.
Just out of curiosity, why would you not ask for a larger piece of property to be rezoned and include that barn?
It's my parents' property, and they want as little as possible to be rezoned.
And you feel like you can operate your business in that amount of property?
Right. Because most of the operations will be in that building. It's storage, and it's where we would do small maintenance on them, small machinery. And then the rest of it's just parking the vehicles in the same vicinity.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Marvin, do you have one? Before you leave, it looks like?
Do you, does the building that's there now, do you plan on it staying, on your rezoning from it back? It, but your, the rezoning area is from it back?
No, the rezoning is, Mike, can you draw? Right to anyway. No, not that one.
The building will remain. The building that's there now will stay there.
About right.
But will not be in the affected area. Okay.
About where Mike's drawing his hand across the, the screen there, right about in that area, is where the line would be, in the back.
All right. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 19-A-020 for Keith Barrett. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Commissioner Piercy?
My name's Steve Piercy. I live at 2841 East Jefferson Pike.
We know where you live, Steve. We'll come and get you.
I've been out and viewed Mr. Barrett's property, what, what he, where he's wanting to do, what he's asking you to do. I am the commissioner out there. As far as the flag-shaped lot, I, hon, I wish they was all like that, because that's going to be about 800 feet off that highway. He's not going to use it for a commercial purpose, his retail, to sell out of. He's just going to come in with his people. They're going to leave. They'll come back. in with his people, they're gonna leave, they'll come back in the afternoon, they'll leave. It'll be a low impact on that area, not near as bad as some of the other that's out in that area. Not trying to tell you how to do your job, but I think it's a good deal. Thank you.
You're recommending approval?
Very much so.
Thank you, Steve. Seeing no one else coming forward, I'm gonna take a wild guess and say that everybody's here for item number three on our agenda tonight. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
All staff comments included in that?
All staff comments included.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item nineteen-a-zero-two-zero for Keith Barrett. Other questions or discussion? Those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This body is a recommending body, and there'll also be a rezoning hearing and a public hearing at the, before the full county commission in this room on Thursday, November the fourteenth. And I believe the planning department will make its presentation at six-thirty PM, six-thirty PM, November fourteenth. Item six-eight-three fifteen-a-zero-two-one Blake Cothran and Judy Ann Cothran, location, intersection of Lebanon Pike and Cut-Off Road, commission district is two, county commissioner is Steve Piercy. Size of the site is approximately eight acres, tax map is twenty-four, existing zoning is RM, residential medium density, proposed zoning is a PUD for planned unit development. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The PUD pattern book for the Griffith Park subdivision, which was originally called Cothran Retreat, was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in November of 2015. The subject property that's before you tonight was originally part of that PUD request and was shown as a future commercial area. Before it was approved by the Board of Commissioners, it was ultimately removed from considerations during, excuse me, due to concerns from residents in the area. The applicant presented a request for rezoning of, again, the property before you tonight to commercial services at the commission's July eighth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. There were several people there who spoke in opposition to this request, and after discussion by the planning commission, the application was recommended for denial. The applicant withdrew that request and has since reapplied for the PUD zoning classification that's before you tonight. The pattern book has been included with your agenda materials as a separate attachment, and again, it is included on your iPads tonight. Neighborhood meeting, as required by the ordinance, was held on September the tenth of this year. Concerns raised by those in attendance included a large list of allowable uses, hours of operation and sight lighting, flooding, drainage concerns, destruction of animal habitat, possibility of increased taxes, traffic concerns, and also security concerns. The concept plan in the pattern book does show two commercial lots, it shows Lot One as two commercial buildings with a total of twenty-eight thousand square feet. Lot Two includes a twenty-four thousand one fifty square foot mini storage facility. The building materials and such are outlined in the pattern book, along with the setbacks, screening, and other items. Proposed uses are also listed on pages twenty through twenty-three of the pattern book and resemble the uses allowed in the commercial services zone. Any proposed development, should this application be approved, would have to be reviewed by staff and approved by the planning commission through a site plan submittal. Access to the properties you can see on the concept plan is shown along proposed, the proposed Malcolm Way, which goes into the subdivision off of US two-thirty-one. There is no direct access to either Cut-Off Road or Lebanon Highway on this plan, which, again, was staff's preference, quite frankly, on this. Turn lane improvements to Malcolm Way are part of the Griffith Park development and have been shown on the concept plan. Of course, verification for any requirements of access and parking would be made during the site plan review process, again, should this application be approved. Chapter nine of our ordinance requires PUDs to add a minimum conform to the landscape standards found in the zoning ordinance. The pattern book originally was requiring a type-one buffer against the residential portions of the subdivision. We have asked them to upgrade that to a type-two, which they have done, which this would, again, would be a typical buffer between commercial and residential properties. Again, if this application is approved, they would have to submit a concept plan demonstrating compliance with that, and of course, the performance standards would have to be adhered to as well. We have received a number of phone calls on this particular application, I know there are several people here who are in attendance to speak on this. The applicant is present, as well as their design team, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Changing this to a PUD, if it's approved and the buildings are built, and then at some point in time they wanted to change to something else, couldn't do it without-
They'd have to come back through the, if it was, if it wasn't called for already in the pattern book, again, they have a large range of uses in the pattern book, but if they wanted to do something completely different or change some of the uses, they would have to come back through this process that we're doing right now.
So the planning commission, the county, and the citizens in that area would know exactly what's supposed to be in there?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Doug, I have one question. On page fifteen of their pattern book, they indicate that between these commercial buildings and Malcolm Way, there'll be a pedestrian connection. Is that a sidewalk, and is that gonna run all the way into the neighborhood?
If the applicant's gonna come address that.
Good evening, Rob Mulch, SEC, and behalf of my client Blake Cothran, who's here tonight with me as well. The idea is that as much as this is now a separate element compared to the original requested PUD back in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, that we're looking at this being part of a walkable structure that goes back to Griffith Park in regards to the residential lots that are going on back there. So we'd be looking at making a sidewalk connection back to Malcolm Way that would then allow for sidewalk connectivity back into the subdivision itself. So residents of Griffith, if they wanted to, they can come on out, walk out, the idea is hopefully that some of these, some of these elements of leasing as we go forward with the project, if it does go forward, would be to provide neighborhood services, such as maybe a small ice cream shop or something like that, that people that live in the neighborhood are more than welcome to walk over there and utilize it versus getting in a car and driving over there. So trying to cut down on vehicular trips just alone by utilizing the neighborhood behind it, by mounting that sidewalk connectivity back to the Malcolm Way.
Okay, so your sidewalk would end at the end of this property that we're looking at?
Correct, it would tie into the sidewalk system with Malcolm Way.
But we don't necessarily, there'll be sidewalks coming down Malcolm Way on these two corner lots, on seventy-five and seventy-four? On page twenty-four, you can see them a little bit better?
Mm-hmm.
Because, I mean, I imagine there would be sidewalks down the front of those, but I didn't necessarily imagine that they would have sidewalks in an L shape on those corner lots?
If I'm not mistaken, the sidewalks do come all the way around the corner and go back up Malcolm Way on that side. So that's, that was, that was the reason why we wanted to do that, was the residential portion had the sidewalks in there, we felt that a good draw for the residents there would be to be able to walk to it.
Any other questions for staff?
I will step back, Mr. Demasi did tell me we do not have sidewalks in that neighborhood, so we will adjust in some form or fashion, so. I didn't know if it was one of the ones that I asked to have sidewalks in when we did the plan five years ago versus today, so I apologize for not knowing where I was at, so.
And then, in the pictures that you gave us of what the storage facility's gonna look like?
Mm-hmm.
I think the pictures were primarily provided for the architecture, but the pictures had, the fencing there was iron, and somewhere in here I read that they wanted to do chain link fence, so are they gonna do chain link or they're gonna do iron?
Well, the intent is to do chain link, but we're intending also to put up a landscaping area along the fence itself, so it's not just gonna be a standalone fence, we're gonna put a landscaping element in front of it, so more or less it's providing the usual security element that you'd have for a storage facility, but we wanted to make certainly dress it up by putting some landscaping to soften that, you know, the whole environment along the face of this, so that, you know, like I said, this parcel, as it's been designed, is to be one singular structure that has external units along the outside, and then it's an internal heated and cooled ventilation system, corridor system internally, and that fence line along two-thirty-one and Malcolm Way would be part of that fencing system and have a landscaping or beautification element along the outside of that, so it's not so much just, hey, here's a storage facility that you may see in some other places, we want it to actually feel like a neighborhood element to go into this.
I've got a question again. I noticed on page nine of your, your application here that Doug sent us the other day, that the water runs from Lebanon Road back toward the subdivision, if I'm reading my arrows right, and on the south, again, if I've got my directions right, and I may be backwards, there's a detention pond.
Correct.
How many, and this is to Mike as well, how many inches of rain of a flood event are we prepared for, or are we gonna send water into the subdivision?
They will be required to detain the two-year storm, the five, the ten, the twenty-five, and the fifty, and control the hundred-year storm event through an emergency spillway. They will incorporate the existing drainage network for Griffith Park, although they will be required to have detention ponds on their own property, each parcel will require to have one. So they'll have to evaluate what's coming to them now and what's leaving now, and what's proposed in the future as well, and compare the two.
Well, now we have trees and dirt and rock.
Yes, sir, right.
When we build these buildings, we'll have all concrete, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Or rooftops, and so none of the water will go in the ground.
Correct, that's why, in regards to the stormwater pond that we show on the properties, both tracks, we have smaller ponds on the, on the track for the north where the mini storage is at, we incorporated some small ponds to be like the first stage for that parcel there, and treat what we can there, and then the remainder of the, what does, you know, does not get, goes through the pervious surface, does impervious surface, goes to that pond on the south side. So our design engineer, Richard House, is here, he can talk more about that if there's any more questions about that, but for the most part, everything that hits the surface in regards to what Mike's talking about, all these different levels of storm events, those will be contained inside that detention facility before it's released back out into the, into the system along Cut-Off Road.
Are there houses right behind that area now, or are they proposed?
Everything that's back there is proposed and has not been constructed at this point in time, they're in the process of getting the roadways in that section done, and then D.R. Horton, who's the developer and builder, is in the process of selling those lots right now on that side, and so. And I know, just to follow up on that, Mike and Richard have had a conversation last week in regards to trying to make certain that, you know, this is being designed between him and him, to make certain that this is done the appropriate way, and make certain that whatever, since this is a larger impervious area versus what's out there today, that we're making certainly detain all we have to detain on those state-regulated guidelines, so. Correct. Right, and the way that a site is kind of conceptually designed right now in a three-dimensional element, we'll be looking at having a ditchway across the backside of that to stop any of that water, and we're gonna create a kind of much, a level pad to put those buildings on there, we'll have internal drainage structures on the parking surfaces and the gutters and stuff, but behind that, we'll have a drainage well that'll help bring the rest of that water off of our site to our detention before it ever tries to leave the property on those homes, so.
And then I might add that you can have surface stormwater detention areas, but you can also have underground and park on top of them, so there's, there's all kinds of options that they can, they can look at. But there, there are several requirements that they'll have to meet, stormwater quantity and quality to meet our county regulations.
I think the most important thing is like we, like Commissioner Phillips said, that we brought this back in, I think, which is the better format in regards to bringing you back a PUD, which gives you a lot more direction, rather, you know, in regards to where we are site-plan-wise, in regards to the overall layout of the property, but also about our commitments to the architectural side of things, and talking about what type of materials we're guaranteeing to be on these structures on that side. I think the pictures of what we represented in regards to the, you know, the two buildings themselves on the lower track, being, you know, your typical kind of, you know, retail center type stuff on that side. You know, one of the other things that I think is important to understand that, and we are also governed by the limited quantity of stormwater capacity, sorry, sewage capacity that we have in the step system that was set aside with the overall development back in the, you know, original PUD on that side. So the uses that we've outlined in here are broad, it's part of the majority of what you see in the CS zoning on that side, but that's just to give our opportunities for leasing as this thing, if it does go forward, to give us the best chances to move forward with whatever tenant wants to move out to this area on that side, so that gives us the best opportunity. But we're also then only able to put certain clientele in there to where we can only maximize out what we have left from the sewage capacity on that side, so that's kind of where we're at. I do want to say that we did talk to D.R. Horton today, they do know about what we're planning on doing in regards to being a neighbor to them in regards to this rezoning on that side. They are making it aware to potential buyers of lots out there that this is being going through rezoning process to have potentially a commercial element on the corner, so they are aware, they are making potential buyers of these newer lots that are closest to this aware that they may be backing up to a commercial element at some point in time in the future if this would go forward at that point in time on that side, so, you know, that was one of the things there. We did a little background research, just throw a couple of numbers at you real quick today, in looking at, you know, regards to, we're not just trying to pop a commercial element way out here and whatever we kind of seems like it's really far out kind of thing, but just looking at some of the numbers in regards to home sales that have been going on within about five-mile radius of this, within the last two years, you're looking at about a hundred and fifty new homes have been built within a five-mile radius of this site. This year alone, that number has surpassed a hundred and fifty homes already, and we're only going in the tenth month of the year on that side. So there is a growing marketplace for, you know, people in this, in this portion of the county on that side, looking for an opportunity for something that they don't have to drive all the way into Smur or Murfreesboro to get neighborhood daily uses out of themselves on that side, so that's kind of, that's where we're kind of going with what we're looking at on that side, so. So that's kind of where we're at, and like I said, we've, all the roadway infrastructure that was approved with the original PUD is actually in the ground and functional at this point in time, I think they were going through the final permitting stages on all the turn lanes, we did on Cut-Off Road, and all the turn lanes off of two-thirty-one onto Malcolm Way, and also on the Cut-Off Road have all been installed at this point in time, so those commitments have been handled on that side, so. I have any other questions, I'll be willing to answer those.
Any questions for the applicant, or any questions for staff this time?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Look, we're ready for a public hearing. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number nineteen-a-zero-two-one, Blake Cothran and Judy Ann Cothran. This is a rezoning request from RM to PUD, and assuming there's a number of people wishing to speak, our guidelines are three minutes, so if you'd hold your comments to three minutes, we might be able to get through this in some type of an order. So anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. If you would give your name to Gail here, and then also repeat it.
I had heard from several neighbors, and it looks like we have some here today, that we are not interested in commercial property out off of Cut-Off Road and Lebanon Pike. There is an increase of houses being built, but those people are people that want to move away from development and would like an area to stay more rural. I conducted a Facebook, well, through Facebook, it's the Walter Hill Facebook group, so it is Neighbors, and I conducted a survey, and I received two-hundred-and-fourteen replies of people who live in that area code, and I removed the names of people that seem to be out of state, but that still puts us at about two-hundred signatures of people who are against. The comment section underneath the survey, just a few comments, this area should be reviewed for infrastructure prior to development, stormwater, drainage, traffic, road conditions, emergency response should all be considered before building in this area. The area is highly congested, county planners should be held responsible for incidents if they do go through proper protocol. People are concerned about flooding. I live on Sierra Drive, which is off of Cut-Off Road, and since the houses have been built, there has been floodwater that has crossed over onto Cut-Off Road, and all along Cut-Off Road with the new development, there is often flooding, but we have seen an increase on Cut-Off Road with the new homes that are being built, and so I just wanted to speak on behalf of these signatures. Many of the neighbors could not be here tonight because there is another rezoning meeting for the Wilson Elementary School that is being held at the same time, so it was kind of a conflict of interest for some of the residents to be here, so I did want to bring this- So I did want to bring the signatures that I gathered.
We have that for the podcast.
I'm sorry?
We have that for the podcast.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Feel like Yogi Berra said, it's deja vu all over again. I'm Ted Gamble. I live at 708 Blue Ridge. So we did have a community meeting. We had about 25 people in attendance. Of those 25 people that were there, nobody wants this, as has already been said. At the meeting, we mentioned some of our concerns, which are increased traffic, specifically off Cut Off Road, running through Griffith Park subdivision, potentially increased trash, noise and light pollution, any business that has a potential for loitering, which has the likelihood of increasing neighborhood crime, and a significant increase in flooding, as our neighbors have said already. At the community meeting, we also said there's some specific types of businesses that we don't want there if we're forced to have businesses. We don't want quick-stop gas stations, AKA stock-stopping robs. We don't want car repair shops because of the noise and the, just the overall decrease in the appearance of that stuff. We don't want beer and tobacco stores. We don't want businesses with operating hours beyond like 10:00 or 11:00 p.m. at night. Additionally, we've heard that the step system won't support restaurants, full-service restaurants. Mr. Mulcham said that he would take those concerns back to Mr. Cothran, who was not present at the meeting. My understanding is that the purpose of a community meeting is for both sides to come together, to try to come to some mutual agreement as to how to proceed. This is on the list in the pattern book, and the fact that Mr. Cothran was not there, I have zero confidence that he is concerned at all with the residents and our concerns. He's not the kind of business partner I want in my neighborhood. Now, when I look at the list of allowable businesses, I see things like ATM machines, that's an invitation for robbers. I see lots of restaurants on here, bail bonds, bonding businesses, bars, lawnmower shops, beer and wine sales, billiard parlors. He mentioned ice cream parlors. He didn't mention these kind of things earlier. Automotive clubs, I can only imagine the noise that's going to come from that. Daycare for animals like dog kennels. I don't know if you've ever driven by the kennel that's next to North Side Liquors, but all you hear is barking coming out of that. I surely don't want that all night. Other things like an electric or a gas substation, I'm sure that the appearance of that would really help the value of our neighborhood. Laundry and dry cleaning services, I can't see how their step system would support that. Lawnmower repair shops, gee, I'd love to hear lawnmowers running all day long. Motor vehicle cleaning and detailing services, I don't think the step system's going to support that. So when you look at all of this, there's been no effort to pare this down to what we really think should be in our neighborhood. So in closing, I'd like to remind you guys that just because something passes engineering guidelines doesn't necessarily mean it's good for the neighborhood. We've got 214 names of people that flat-out don't want this. So I would urge you to listen to the voice of the community and deny this 100%.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Gamble. I'm at 708 Blue Ridge Drive. I have been dealing with this proposed change to the property since 2014 when we worked with D.H. Horton regarding the building of the new homes. I don't mind a residential aerial. D.H. Horton was very good with working with us to tell us that they were going to develop a neighborhood that would benefit all of the areas that we live in and improve our homes. We expressed our apprehension to the building of commercial property. D.H. Horton agreed that it was not beneficial to their neighborhood to have a commercial property in front of their homes. It was taken off the books this year. Here we are again, saying again, we do not wish to have commercial property in our neighborhoods. It makes no sense to me why, when everybody that's moved into this area has wanted to move out of the Murfreesboro city limits in order to get away from commercial property. We enjoy not having the noise, the light pollution, just to be able to sit out and look at the stars. All of this doesn't make sense to we have to keep coming back and asking again and again to stop the commercial property moving into the neighborhood. We realized when we moved out into the community that five minutes down the road, there is $2 generals in either direction. If you need something, you go to the store. If we need a sandwich, there is two locations, not three minutes down the road, that we can get a sandwich. No one wants their children walking out towards 231 to get an ice cream cone. That's just ridiculous, and it's not going to happen. What parent in the room would want that to happen? Please, hear what the community is telling you. We don't want commercial property. There's beautiful, natural trees there to help absorb the water. It takes away from the pollution that's coming off of 231 from the traffic. Here are concerns, and let's put an end to this now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dawn Pierce, and I live at 271 Cut Off Road. My husband and I bought our home last year in June. And Griffith Park is right across the street from my house, literally. We lived in the city for eight and a half years and decided to move out to the country. When we bought our home, we knew that there was going to be a housing community, but I didn't know there was going to be such a boom that there is. The homes that are going up right now, where they are putting the foundation, literally is probably just a few feet from the ditch. I don't think the developer or the owners even have gone out when we get rain, because the last big rain that we got, my husband hand-dug 150 feet of a French drain so that the water between our house and our neighbors would go into the ditch. The county came out and replaced the gopher, the tube that goes underneath the driveway. And that helped, and the French drain helped. Then when Griffith Park started building and we got the last rain that was really bad, my husband's French drain failed. The water that was coming off of 231 Lebanon Pike, both on our side of the road and on the side of Griffith Park, it overflowed the ditches. I had stuff that was the straw and the pine needles from the corner of Cut Off in Lebanon Pike in my front yard, out of my ditch. Down on the corner of Deborah and Cut Off Road, across the street from Griffith Park, there are four drain holes that go into Griffith Park that failed. You had people in the new homes that had actually two steps, and the water was to their back porch, the concrete. They were upset. I do not see how having commercial business up there is going to do any good. They're going to take those trees away. But they also forgot, and they failed to tell everyone, that the first set of trees that they took out so that they can make those houses, there was a set, a pair of American bald eagles. They tore those trees down and burned them. Other animals that I have seen over there, they don't care about that. They're not getting anyone out there to look. That's not right. My nine-year-old granddaughter stayed with us last summer, and she's the one that pointed out the eagles to us. And then she cried when she saw that they burnt the trees. We didn't know if there was eggs or babies in there, and they're not going to tell you. Having those trees removed is the natural sponge. They're going to take that away, and they're going to be left with clay. And we're going to have a bunch of asphalt and a bunch of business, and they're not going to tell us exactly how much is in there or how many square feet each one is going to have, because I asked them that at our neighborhood meeting, and they said they didn't know, because it's not built. And then the people, that the homes that are going to back up to those businesses, they're not even built, they're not even sold, and they don't even have a voice in it. So me and my community out there, that me and my husband chose to be, we're speaking for them. We don't need you there. We don't want you there. It doesn't serve a purpose. If you want mini storage, go down Jefferson Pike, go east or west, and you can get one. Just like Dollar General, up and down Lebanon Pike, go either way and you can get one. Eight minutes and you can go to Publix, McDonald's, Taco Bell. In our little community, we have Dollar General, we have a liquor store, we have the Chinese restaurant, we have a walk-in mini clinic, we have a pizza parlor, and you can get sandwiches and other things there. And we just got a mini post office, so if you want to send something off. But having the things that they want there, it's not feasible, and we don't want it. We don't need it. And we know that we're growing, but this is not going to serve a purpose. It's just going to cause more chaos. Thank you.
To remind you once again, please try to hold your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Dawn Haney, and I live at 636 Erlacher. My husband and I just moved out to Harvest Woods subdivision about a year and a half ago. We moved from the Antioch Priest Lake area. And the primary reason that we moved is because we wanted away from all of the crazy construction and the commercial businesses that were going in and out there. We wanted to come to someplace that was a little more rural, where we had neighbors, but they weren't right next to us. And I just am vehemently opposed to the commercial property that's being proposed. If they want to continue on with the residential property, I have no problem with that. I know that everybody's growing, and I know that Rutherford County is the next up-and-coming area, and that there's, you know, the overflow from everybody that's moving into Nashville. Everybody's coming out, and that this is where the new it place to be. So I don't mind the residential, but again, as everyone else's voice, there is no reason for us to have commercial property right there. Ten minutes down the road, if we can get anything we need, one way or the other. And we knew, moving out here, that we were going to have to drive to get to those conveniences. So I would respectfully ask all of you to deny this petition.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm April Smith, 101 Harvest Grove Boulevard. My husband and I moved back about 10 years ago, so we've been in this area. We moved across town because of Veterans Parkway kicked us out of that area. So again, also wanted to be rural. I grew up in a very small town, we both did, in Wilson County. So I'm good with the country, that's why we're there. I think I should be fair and say I stood here and opposed the PUD initially as well. I think that medium residential was entirely appropriate for that area. So I did not agree with that ruling, just because the volume of houses is just too much, too many. You should see the kids at the bus stop from the very few houses that are already there. Obviously, the other meeting tonight about the rezoning shows how that was, you know, not the greatest decision for our area. So the commercial thing being removed last time did take a lot of the sting out of losing the battle against the PUD. And I do have to say that when I was here, I felt like it was already a made decision. So I really hope that you'll listen to the community tonight and our concerns for our area to protect our way of living. We have people that have moved there on purpose. That was the point, is to avoid traffic and congestion and light pollution, especially the light and the noise. I mean, it's just, you can already hear 231, it sounds like a racetrack when you sit out in the evenings. There's just, there's just no desire for any of those, any businesses at all at the end of the road. I think it would be a very poor traffic decision. We already have a lot of accidents around there. It's just really unsafe. School traffic is the craziest. And in fact, it was, you know, one of my bigger concerns, initially, they hadn't even done their traffic study during school time that had to be revisited after one of our community meetings. So I'm just really going to ask that you guys listen to the community on this one. I'd appreciate it if you would take all of the concerns to heart. And if it was you, and you made the big move on purpose out there, and then somebody come in to try to change that, maybe think about how you'd feel about it. So I appreciate your time. I know you all want to get home.
Thank you. You just barely made it.
Hi, Damian Baker. We live in Harvest Grove, right next to Harvest Woods there. And not to repeat what everybody else said, I came up here and spoke about, but my wife and I and my son, we moved out there to escape all the businesses and all the commercial properties and just to have some open space. And we realized there was a lot of homes being built out there, and we were able to get one of those homes, like somebody else said, that, you know, we have a little bit of space in between, and we're very happy. Really took a lot of time to decide where to move, really looked a lot of different places, because we wanted a place where we could have a short drive and get everything we need. Right in town, you got, you know, all the big, the big-name stores, the big-name shops. And of course, we have the little shops, like the others said, down the street, the Dollar Generals and the little markets. And I just, I just hope that you can all, again, without repeating what everybody else said, I hope that you said, I hope that you can all just turn this down and deny it, because I do not want commercial property there. Some of the neighbors that I've spoken to that are not here tonight because of the other meeting that was mentioned about the differences in the kids going to Walter Hill and, you know, where they live, the zoning there. Some other people that were wanting to come tonight couldn't make it either, but I just wanted to come up and say, I hope, no disrespect to the developers, to the landowners, you know, I know it's a growing area. But myself, my family and everybody I've spoken to, they do not want this to happen out there and I hope that it's denied and you listen to the residents out there. Thank you.
Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing still open.
Three, four years ago, when this first come up for a PUD, I'd just become Commissioner. The land was already zoned for 130 homes, maybe. They were asking for like 185. I spoke against it because of the density that that would make out there. And I failed, it passed because of the PUD. What we're really not considering is what we're going to do to our traffic flow right there. Cut-off is already a nightmare. We're fixing to build two new county schools within a rock's throw of cut-off road. They're going to back up from those schools all the way through the cut-off. I don't know. I had asked if the turning lane for cut-off extended up to the new road out on the main highway. Maybe it appears it does coming from Murfisboro. It's most definitely it would need to, because it's going to be a death trap if it's not. These people are sincere. I have went door-to-door through their community campaigning. Of course, it's like a lot of other Rutherford County, there's nice homes everywhere you look. They didn't have any idea what was coming when they moved out there. Nobody does. But you can't run from progress. Progress will run you down. I'd love to move myself, but I don't even know which direction to go to to get away from it. But the area that's being presented here tonight, I think it's a flower trying to bloom before its time. The road is just a two-lane road. For a commercial right there, I think it's way away from what commercial we already have out that road. It's probably a mile and a half to two mile excluding the little Dutch barn place that's directly across the road. Stretching it way out, in my opinion, out past the gray area. May not be to y'all, but that's just my opinion. I don't think it should be zoned commercial until that road is four-laned. And it's coming one day. It's coming. That side of town will grow just like South Church has and it'll blow wide open. But for right now, until we can get the schools built and address the traffic with wider roads, I just can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner, the ball's in our court.
Mike, do you have any knowledge of their concern along cut-off road in this recent rain and any issues down there, were they reported to the county?
Yes.
Were they sustainable? What did we find from that? Can you share?
The Highway Department is working on Debra and cut-off road drainage improvements. What happened, we had some check dams and a ditch along here that got overwhelmed with a heavy rainfall event. It did spill out into the road. So they have since stabilized the ditch and it's grass now and the check dams have been removed, I've been told. Like I said, the Highway Department's working on Debra and cut-off. One of the problems we found out is that the power company put a couple poles, right, blocking a couple of the culverts crossing cut-off roads, so we're going to have to shift those over. Not the poles, the culverts. And like I said, the Highway Department's working on that. There are actually four culverts right here and two of them are essentially blocked by these power poles. The flow is restricted. I won't say blocked, but it doesn't flow as well as it should with these two poles right there. As far as drainage, we will evaluate their design with a fine tooth comb. Richard enjoys my comments I give to him. Every plan that I see his, that was sarcasm, anyway. But as far as drainage, I will do my utmost best to make sure that it will not impact any of the neighbors. But like I said, we will evaluate what's coming there now and what's proposed and make sure they meet our water quality and water quantity standards.
Doug, was the proposal also for the septics in this commercial to be from the step system?
Yes, that was part of the design of the step, was a little excess capacity for a
Other questions? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
As it sits today, if it does not pass, what can be built on there?
Well, it's residentially zoned, so...
Townhomes?
No, just single-family, single-family residential, correct.
Any residential development? Most of the trees would go. Any residential development, most of the trees in that buffering would go anyway?
Well, any develop, right. I mean, if they were even to, even if they were developed as single-family RM lots, 50,000 square foot, yes, I mean, a lot of those trees would have to be removed.
Tell me about the comprehensive plan, the long-term, what a comprehensive plan envisioned for that, for that strip of road.
Right. Excuse me. The comprehensive plan classifies the property just in general as being located within the suburban belt character area. Now, that recommends residential densities up to three units per acre, which is fairly common to what you get out. I mean, the Griffith Park subdivision is probably closer to that than, say, the Harvest Woods development, because they're larger lots. But the type of development that you would see, there would be a minimum of 15,000 square foot, roughly three units an acre is what you're looking at. The commercial densities are .2 FAR floor area ratio, which basically is a ratio between the amount of floor area versus the amount of land area. That's how you calculate that. Lebanon Pike is classified as an urban corridor, which, that's of the classifications in the comprehensive plan, that's kind of the highest level of corridor that's in there. That recommends densities, higher densities for residential up to 10 units an acre and then also a higher floor area ratio, which means you could have more floor area to the lot that you had in question. So that's what the comprehensive plan recommends for that.
So it sounds like there's a very high level of probability that at some point this is going to be four-laned with maybe a fifth turning lane in the middle or, I know it's a little hard to see in the future, but this is going to be a major.
I would anticipate in the future, something like that. Now, I will say right now, the county's comprehensive, or Long Range Transportation Plan does not show that. Now, any improvements on Lebanon Pike, of course, those are state roads, so those would have to be, you know, state-initiated, funded and whatnot. I mean, there may be some opportunity for local funding, I don't know, but that's not something, you know, the county just can't go out there and start widening a state road. The state wouldn't like that very much, so, and I'm sure Lee could attest to that. So, but at some point in the future, I think as time goes on, as you start seeing more growth and development going up toward the northern end of Rutherford County, toward Wilson County, I think in time you will have to identify some possible improvements, widenings, if you will, to 231 Lebanon Pike. They're just not shown now. Because as of right now, I did some, TDOTS website, they have the traffic count data on their website. The data that they have is generally about a year behind, whatever year you're in, and they recently updated it to 2018 data. So the 2017 count, which is what we had previously when this report came through a few months ago, they hadn't updated it to 2018 data yet, it was 9,155 vehicles per day, average daily travel on that road. The 2018 count went up to 9,356. So, and when you compare that to 2016, that was up from, at that time, which was 8870. So it's, we are seeing more traffic along that road.
Doug, what was your recommendation?
Staff recommended approval. And I will say, when we look at these applications, of course, we're looking at it from the vantage point of what does a comprehensive plan say primarily? You know, again, recommends commercial densities, recommends residential densities. We also look at it from the standpoint of this is along a major arterial road, Lebanon Pike, as well as the fact that it is, even though it is just across streets, a smaller piece of property, there is commercial zoning in the area. So that's what staff looks at from that vantage point. Now, understand, I've said this before and I'll say it to the Commission again, which I know you've heard this, but I'll say it for those who are in the audience, staff's recommendation is just that. It is a recommendation. You don't have to abide by it. It's just after we look at it, take into the factors into consideration after what we look at with the comprehensive plans surrounding land uses, zoning, whatnot, that's the recommendation we came to.
Doug, if this is approved and the road is widened, will there be room for the road and still operate the businesses that are proposed, or will all the parking and berm and all that stuff have to be removed? And will Highway 231 be right at the front door of whatever they're at?
Right. The, according to the county's GIS, when I was looking at this application, there's about 100 feet of right-of-way located along this section of Lebanon Pike. Generally, a four or five-lane cross-section, especially if you're using curb and gutter, is going to be somewhere around 100 feet. If there was going to be right-of-way dedication, generally, that's going to be enough. They're not going to have, if they're going to need some, they're not going to need much more. Now, of course, I'm saying all this, there's no, obviously, there's no design or anything like that. If they decide to shift the road one way or the other, you know, there's the potential that they may have to look at the possibility of buying more on one side than the other. But when you look at the plan that the applicant is presenting, I mean, there is pretty decent-sized setbacks that they're proposing for that. So I don't think it'll be a situation where you'll see the road encroaching right next to the buildings or anything like that. These are far enough back that that shouldn't be an issue. But the amount of right-of-way that's already there should be sufficient to accommodate most of what an eventual widening may entail. Now, they may just do a three-lane. And if that's the case, you know, a three-lane road is, I mean, that 100, right, for your right-of-way is plenty for a three-lane road. But you can see on the concept plan that Mike just pulled up there, I mean, you've got the parking areas where the, before you even get to the buildings. Generally, you're looking at a minimum of right around 60 feet, generally 18, 19 feet for the parking spaces, 24 foot for the aisle width between them, then the landscape area even in front of that. So there's a lot of room before you get to the buildings.
Can we deny this just because we think it does not fit the neighborhood?
You can, okay. Anytime you make any kind of a recommendation for approval or denial, it needs to be accompanied by reasons for that. Now, I will say that these are not popularity contests, and I've said that to you many times. You know, it's not a situation where more people say yay than say nay or vice versa, then you automatically go with that. You need to have solid reasoning for why you feel that it's not appropriate. Just saying it's not appropriate for the area, you probably need more than that. Now, I would defer to Nick Christensen to, you know, maybe discuss the legalities a little bit more, but just simply denying it without any reasons or just saying, I just don't feel it meets the character of the area, I think you need a little more than that to recommend a denial. And to make, of course, officially, a denial doesn't come until it's heard by the Board of Commissioners. Again, the Planning Commission for zoning cases is just like what I'm doing, it's a recommending body. So if you make a recommendation for denial and it goes forward to the County Commission, they can still approve it. I mean, and vice versa, you could recommend approval and it could be denied at the County Commission. So it's just a recommendation at this point, but I'll let Nick chime in on that.
Yeah, PUDs are a different, unique sort of creature that is outlined in our zoning ordinance. Doug, I might turn to you here in a minute in terms of what generally can be considered. The PUD part of the zoning ordinance is pretty extensive, but it does mention things like adequate facilities and you've got to have adequate facilities to sustain a PUD approval. That's everything from the streets to the utilities, et cetera. I have not looked at this application, so I'm not sure if there's been assurances provided that they would in fact meet that. There's discussion here about roads possibly being an issue. I don't know if a traffic study has been completed to show what sort of impact this would have on the road, so that's number one. Number two is, Doug is right, generally speaking, opposition that is based on speculation or fears or concerns, not taking away from the fact that people feel like that's, you know, that those are legitimate concerns, cannot consider that in denying an application. Now, if they're supported by factual premises that have been submitted, then you can, but simply fear that this will happen or that that'll happen is generally something that you cannot consider. One other thing, under our zoning ordinance, there's a section entitled perimeter requirements, and it says that PUDs shall be harmonious and not conflict with the surrounding residential neighborhood. Uses of landscaping, screening, open space, architectural compatibility measures, change in density, and the placement of buildings shall be accepted, land use planning tools by which this harmonious relationships can be created. So with that in mind, I'm not sure that really goes specifically to just neighboring adjacent properties feeling like they don't want it there, but there are tools that this board can implement to suggest that there has to be higher buffers or other offenses or reducing the amount of parking or the size of the buildings to take care of and make sure that it is harmonious with the surrounding area.
There a signal proposed for Malcolm Way and all this development? I can't remember, I'm just trying to refresh my memory. There's turn lanes at cut-off and turn lanes at Malcolm.
Well, I don't see the practicality of making that residential zoning there that close to what's going to be a major highway. And I kind of view it as being separate from cut-off road. I think the impact there will be minimal, have a minimal negative impact on cut-off road, so therefore, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion? We have a motion? Listen, excuse me. Public comments are over. Planning Commission is in discussion. Please hold your comments to yourself. We have a motion to approve. Need a second. Without a second, the motion to approve fails. The Chair is still looking for a motion. Could you read the one about the harmonious again, please?
Sure can. And I... I'm not sure, Doug, if this has ever been implicated in an application before, but as I read through this, I was trying to find the specific standards, and I think that there are a lot of them. But the one that you... That I mentioned was under perimeter requirements, and it says, "PUDs shall be harmonious and not conflict with the surrounding residential neighborhood. Use of landscaping, screening, open space, architectural compatibility measures, change in density, and the placement of buildings shall be accepted, land use planning tools by which this harmonious relationship can be created." So I think that more envisions it being there and getting it to a position where it doesn't just stand out like a sore thumb.
I would agree with what Nick is saying on there. Basically, what the section he's reading from, again, this is all in Chapter Nine of our ordinance, which deals with the different aspects of plan developments. And the tools that they're talking about using as far as landscaping, screening, open space, et cetera, those are all tools that can be used to try to soften, you know, the perimeters of plan developments is really what they're going for here. So it's more of the kind of giving the... An applicant, a potential applicant, some avenues by which they can take to actually reduce any potential impacts to the development, to surrounding areas.
Well, I think if we agree that it's not harmonious because we don't want it, it maybe does not fit that. Maybe I'm thinking that way. But legally, I don't have legs down, though.
Generally speaking, you cannot take into consideration speculations and fears and opposition of an application. That's a general rule of thumb in planning.
Nick, I think you've answered this question for us before in previous meetings. Because I know we've talked about it, but what if we just feel like it's premature? Because this is one of those situations where... That we're faced with a lot of times where everybody's a little bit right. The neighbors are right that they bought out there for a reason, and they were trying to get away from all this. The developers are also right in that this is coming. The growth is coming. And so at some point, they're going to need to make peace with the fact that that's a major corridor, and commercial development's going to happen along there. In our comprehensive plan, we look at a long-range plan. We look at 20 years. That doesn't mean that that's ready for that today. And so I guess that's kind of my question to you is, do you feel like we would have a foundation to deny based on the fact that this is premature development?
Yeah. It's hard for me to comment on what is and what is not specifically going to be a legal basis. I can opine and guess, and there's too many moving parts to any application particularly like this. If we need to, we might look at the zoning ordinance to examine the standards of which you all can review this. And some of the concerns that have been mentioned are things like the roads. Now, under adequate public facilities, under B, it says, "Approval of a PUD shall be based upon a finding that streets, utilities, and drainage features have adequate capacity to serve the proposed development. The applicant for a PUD shall present any applicable studies, i.e. traffic studies, and documentation with their application that demonstrates all relevant utility companies and governmental departments have been consulted, and that adequate capacity exists for their development. If deficiencies do exist, the applicant shall offer to upgrade or otherwise provide adequate facilities to support their development." I think the reason I bring that up is, you mentioned that it might not be right out there yet because the roads haven't been put into place that would handle in adequate fashion the increased sort of impact that this PUD may or may not have. So I think that is something that you can consider. Again, I don't know if the applicant has submitted a traffic study or not.
I guess kind of what I was thinking was, just even compatible zoning, the commercial hasn't developed out there yet. Everything that's still around it, minus that one little business, the commercial hasn't developed this far out yet. So that's kind of what I was thinking more along the lines of being premature, that it's incompatible with the existing zoning.
Yeah. With any sort of zoning change, that... I mean, Doug, you'd agree, I think, on that, that in terms of figuring out what the surrounding area is, you don't want to engage in spot zoning or other sort of inherent conflict of picking out a particular parcel and zoning it where there's not any other sort of parcel of its same kind around. So I think that is a consideration that in any planning decision, whether it's a PUD or not, that from a legal perspective, you could consider.
Commissioner Allen, I think we kind of had that in the last two that we had with the subdivision out there, and then also the subway there on 99 out by Rock Vale, where we didn't necessarily disagree with what was coming, but we thought it was premature for the area and what was forthcoming. Again, that's just something that I've wrestled with and still do. I understand both sides, and I appreciate the community, and I appreciate the developer. And I think it's what it is. But you can look back and look and see that there is not much in a commercial environment very close to that at this point in time. You know, my comfort levels, you know, again, can go both ways. But I will go ahead and make a motion to deny based on premature zoning due to the information we have at hand right now.
A second? We have a motion and a second to deny. Any other questions? Any other comments?
Unrelated. This development would use the step system with the subdivision behind it, correct?
That's correct.
Has that ever been done before?
I don't think... I'm trying to remember off the top of my head if anything like that's been done, but it's just a matter of capacity. I mean, it's not unusual, and I don't think there's anything wrong with a commercial area accessing the same development if the agreements are in place between developers, and if the capacity exists and CUD says it's okay, I don't really see why there'd be an issue.
How do you know the capacity if the houses haven't been built?
Well, they know how many houses are going to be built. Now, of course, and they kind of made mention of this during Mr. Mulchon's comments, that, I mean, they realize there's only a certain amount of capacity that's actually there. There are going to be uses that... If there were uses that in that list that they provided, there are going to be higher users, if you will, of some of that capacity than others would. So it's going to be... If this were to be approved, it'd be incumbent upon them, you know, basically, they've got what they've got, you know, once it's used. And CUD would be, you know, regulating that as well and keeping an eye on that. Once they got to a certain point, you know, if they built one building and used all the excess capacity, that's it. You know, there's really nothing else you can do with the step system at least.
Oh, wow. You're essentially creating a sewer system, a regional sewer system, and they just built extra capacity in that sewer system.
Other questions or concerns? We're ready to vote. We have a motion and a second to deny item 19-A021 for Blake and Judy Ann Cuthbert. All those in favor of that motion to deny, please say aye. Let me say this one more time. All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion. Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush. I'm sorry. Pettus Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
And Jeff Phillips. That's six yeses and four noes.
The motion to deny carries. Let me reiterate this. This will be heard before the full county commission. This is a recommending body, and this rezoning request will be heard before the county commission in November on Thursday, the 14th, 6:30 p.m. in this courtroom. And once again, thank you for your time and your participation tonight. Other business, Doug?
I don't have anything, Mike.
Anyone have anything? Our next meeting is scheduled for October 28th. That'll be a 9:00 a.m. meeting in the Planning Maze. Thank you for your participation. It was not an easy night. Good job. Thank you. We're adjourned.